Okay, good evening, everyone. This meeting of the City of Glens Falls Zoning Board of Appeals is a virtual meeting is authorized by New York Executive Order two point, excuse me, two zero two point one. The public is participating by Zoom. The meeting has been advertised on the city's website, notice of which has been posted. This live Zoom meeting is being recorded and will be made available shortly after ending on the City of Glens Falls YouTube page, which is available at www.youtube.com and searching for City of Glens Falls. If you wish to participate by making a statement or asking a question, please wait until the moderator opens the meeting for public comments. You should raise your hand until you receive a text stating that you will be called upon in the order in which you have been signaled. The meeting with the order of which you have signaled the meeting administrator. So with that, let us begin, Mr. Perner.
Thank you. Welcome to the February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Glens Falls Zoning Board of Appeals. First item of business is to approve the minutes from the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. I didn't see any change to them, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting, the minutes as written for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Second by Stephen Van Gilder, roll call, Stephen Van Gilder. I. Allison.
Hi.
Tim.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Is there any old, I know we have some carryovers from last meeting. I don't think there's any old business. On the agenda this evening is area variance twenty dash zero zero three zero Michael Forlini, owner of fifteen East Notre Dame Street. Is there someone here, the applicant or someone representing the applicant? Take it as no. Is there anybody in from the public that wishes to comment on this application?
There's no one in queue, Jeff.
No one in queue. This application has been, actually, let me, Chris, have you spoken to Mr. Forlini recently?
I've not heard from him in months.
And you have made several attempts to reach out to him, if I'm not mistaken, from past meetings.
As far as I know, he gets the mailings all the time from my secretary.
Okay. In light of that, that we've had this application before us now for several months. I don't recall how many, but I think it's been at least the last two or three meetings. I would like to make a motion to deny area variance twenty dash zero zero three zero Michael Forlini, owner of tax map number three oh two dot two zero dash one six dash eight, known as fifteen East Notre Dame Street, seeking a variance to allow a six-foot fence within the setback. We had spoken to Mr. Forlini about some potential changes to that fence, but he's not responded to any of our requests to consider that and therefore make the motion to deny. Ed, do I need to go through the reasons?
You could quickly go through the reasons. I don't think you have to belabor it. I would point out for the record, according to my notes, it first appeared in October and was then tabled in November, at two meetings in November, because there was a special meeting.
Right.
The December meeting was canceled and then it was tabled again in January.
Yeah, so in denying this, the fence is right up against, I believe it's right at the curb. It really is unappealing in how it looks in the character of the neighborhood. We had wanted him to move it back a little bit to accommodate somewhat of not being right on the right on the curb as it is presently located to bring it more in line with the building. But without any response from the applicant, I don't think we have any choice but to deny it. You know, there could have been an alternative to this, but again, the applicant hasn't been here to to propose anything. So with that, do I have a second on my motion to deny the variance?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Allison. Again, we'll go through a roll call vote. Stephen.
Hi.
Hi, Allison.
Hi.
Tim.
I'm an I.
Matt.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Motion passes unanimously. The next one on the agenda this evening is area variance twenty dash zero zero three seven Diane and Anthony Parrelli, 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 owners of seventeen Chippy Street. Again, this is a variance request for a six-foot fence with a front yard setback. I believe at the last meeting, we had asked Chris Vanderzies to work with the applicant to try to find a way after the snow melts to potentially accommodate some of the board's concerns as the fence itself is encompassing quite a bit of the the house, in fact, enveloping it, and we were hoping there could be some way that could please the requirements for a fencing in Glens Falls while at the same time aesthetically looking good in the neighborhood and not not fortressing off the house. And so we agreed to table it until Chris could meet with her in the spring when the snow has thawed. So again, I'd like to make a motion to table this and Ed, I'll ask you, can I table this until Chris has had a chance to meet with her after the snow has thawed?
I would table it and just leave it on the agenda for the next meeting so that you could just touch base on it each meeting to see where it's at.
Okay, who knows, maybe we'll get an early spring.
Right, that way if they are able to meet, you don't lose a month and they could just get on the agenda.
All right. Then I would like to make a motion to again table until the next zoning board of appeals meeting, the area variance twenty dash zero zero three seven Diane and Anthony Barelli, owners of tax map number three oh two dot nineteen dash twenty-two dash sixteen, known as seventeen Chippy Street. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve. Again, roll call, Steve.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Tim.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. It passes unanimously. Next up is area variance twenty dash zero zero five two Prines Island LLC, owner of tax map three oh nine dot one two dash twelve dash four and three oh nine dot twelve dash twelve dash five, known as Reed Street, looking for approval for lot coverage from seventy to eighty-five percent and a side yard setback from thirty-seven to eighteen. And I know we had some discussion at the prior meeting on this, and I believe the, were we waiting on the county, Ed?
You were waiting on the county was one item which came back with no comment.
No comment.
And then you were also waiting on some information about screening and the applicant's attorney I see can present, but they were in front of the planning board subsequent to your meeting and proposed some screening.
Yeah, John, I believe you're here representing.
Yes, hi, Jeff. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Kirsten Catalier is on also from Studio A Landscape Architecture. I'm looking at the map that Kirsten resubmitted after the ZBA meeting. You all made it clear that you wanted more screening along the rear and she added a bunch of spruce trees, which should do a lot in addition to the existing vegetation that's there to screen this facility from the neighbors, although they're far away. This should make a pretty big difference.
Thank you for including that into your site plan.
Certainly.
Yes, it's, I think it would be a pretty noticeable difference once it's, once that project's completed. And I think over the long term, mind those things to mature and grow. I think it'll be a beautiful addition.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Yeah, Chris.
Um, when was the last time that site was actually surveyed?
The survey that was referenced in the in the submission maps was from two thousand and eleven.
That's when the Vogels purchased it.
Okay. Does that chain link fence show up? And I don't have it in front of me. Does the chain link fence on Reed show up on that survey map?
Yep, at the rear portion of the parcel, there is a chain link fence shown.
Okay. This is a further question for for the applicant. Anything else to add from the applicant from the planning board meeting or?
I think I think we covered it all at the last zoning board meeting. The planning board approved the site plan. And we told them that you wanted the screening and we were able to provide that for their meeting. So I think we're set.
And Ed, was this an unlisted action?
This is unlisted because they're seeking setback and lot coverage variances.
I guess I have to go through the seeker.
Yes, the planning board went through as well, as I recall. I don't think it was exempt. And so you should go through as well, but let you know they did not find any environmental concern.
Don't know that I have it in front of me here. Does anyone else have it to go through? Oh, wait a minute.
If you can't find it, let me know.
I've got the, yeah, the short environmental assessment form.
Part two.
Yeah. Apologies, I am here. You know what? I don't know that I have part two in front of me. It was emailed out, I believe, at the last meeting. What I have with my application is blank.
We did provide it before the last meeting.
Yeah, it's in my email, if I recall now.
You want me to run through the the eleven questions, Jeff?
Sure.
Okay, so this is part two of the seeker analysis for Reed Street. Question number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No or small impact or large impact?
Small impact.
Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No or small impact or moderate to large?
No small impact.
Will the proposed action impair the quality, the character or quality of the existing community?
No, it's a heavy or industrial area.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
Public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
So those were answered with respect to the variances in front of you. Based on that, the board could make a finding of a negative declaration for seeker purposes.
Based on the answer to those questions, then I'd make a motion that the board does find a negative declaration for seeker purposes for this application. Do I have a second?
Second that.
Matt seconded. I'll go through a roll call vote. Steve.
Did you get me? I.
I, yep. Tim.
Man, I.
Allison.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Hi, and let's see, Dan.
Hi.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any public comment for this application?
There's no one.
No, no one. All right. Then I will make a motion that area variance twenty dash zero zero five two Prines Island LLC, known as Reed Street, that the Glens Falls Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the application for the area variance as presented at this evening's meeting. It does not appear this will create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or would be a detriment to any of the nearby properties. The benefit really doesn't seem to be sought by any other means. Well, although some of the proposed variances are substantial, that shouldn't really affect the granting of this variance. I don't believe this variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, of the environment or neighborhood. And although this is self-created, there really is no way for the expansion to go forward without this. Do I have a second on the motion to approve?
I will second it.
Second by Steve. Again, roll call vote. Tim.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Dan.
I abstain.
Abstains, and I vote in the affirmative. The motion passes.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Thanks, John. All right, next up on the agenda is area variance twenty one dash zero zero three Stewart Shop Corporation, owner of tax map three oh nine dot thirty-five dash two dash four, commonly known as one hundred and eighteen Broad Street, seeking approval for variances in the front and rear setbacks for the construction of a new convenience store and self-serving fueling station. Is there someone here representing Stewart's? I believe there is.
Yep, Chris Potter from Stewart's.
Hi, Chris.
Hello.
Could you walk us through the application here?
We're looking to to redevelop our existing location at one eighteen Broad Street. Currently, we have our store and vacant rental that's directly behind it on the site. We're looking to first, we would demolish the vacant rental, which would allow us to build the new store. And then after that, we would demolish the current store and that would allow us to add gas back to the site, which we used to have. And then currently, the existing Stewart's building is actually three feet over the property line on the on the southern side and it's on the property line on the northern side. So I know, you know, we are looking for a number of setback variances, but we are, we are going to improve setback from what we currently are today. And then as, you know, we looked at decreasing the building size, you know, currently on a standard store, we're at almost four thousand square feet. And with this one, we're just, we're just over thirty-two hundred. But we are, we are decreasing the overall building from what's there today. About twenty-six percent of building occupies the site currently will be down to twenty-three. So our green space is going to increase substantially. We're currently at six percent and we're going to, we're going to increase that to twenty. So with the gas canopy, we would need the setbacks twenty feet, so we would need sixteen feet of relief. It's equally distant from each of the property lines. And then the building, we would need both front yard setbacks and a rear, the front yard are both twenty and we are six feet away on the Hudson Ave side and, or sorry, yes, six feet away on Broad Street side, one foot away on Hudson Ave. So we would need nineteen feet of relief and fourteen feet of relief. And then we would also need a rear yard setback where we proposed three feet. And we would need twelve feet of relief for that.
And you had said it used to have gas on the site?
We did have a canopy with a with a single pump on it, you know, not not quite sure how that functioned, but it did.
Jeff, I can procedurally let you know that they were in front of the planning board earlier this month for their initial site plan review.
Any comments to note from a planning board?
Basically, they needed some additional information. I think overall, there weren't any major concerns, but it was a very, the preliminary plan, so additional information was needed and it was noted that they would have to go to this board for variances.
So the the current store that's there now is is non-conforming. Is that correct? It doesn't meet setbacks in its present situation?
Correct.
Questions from the board?
I think that my questions are probably not really zoning board related. It's, I mean, I would have questions if I was on the planning board, but in this situation, I think that my questions are not material.
I guess I'd just like to make a couple observations, not necessarily questions. So, you know, when I, when I first got the application and saw that this project was being redeveloped, my initial reaction was, you know, great idea. You know, what, given the the shape of the parcel, it's, there's really not much more you can really do to it. But after looking further in the application, thinking about it further, it is a very atypical lot and you're putting your standard building, though I know it's a downsize of your square footage. So it's a little bit smaller than your your standard size, but we have your standard building and your standard canopy shoe-worn on this very tight, constricted site. And I think this is one instance where the line between site plan comments and zoning board kind of gray a little bit because they're definitely all related. And so to me, at first glance of this first approach, it just seems like it's, it's trying to fit too much on the property at a lot of the expense of the neighborhood, the road corridor, the aesthetics. So that's just kind of my initial thought, but some of that is related to site plan comments. But again, it pertains to the overall character of the neighborhood and how it affects the transportation corridor that lot as a gateway to downtown. So just some initial thoughts, very vague.
Yeah, I would echo some of your comments there that it does seem like it's looking to put quite a bit in a in a small space.
And Chris, I guess I have a question. Chris, just one one last parting thought here. Did you look at other orientations of the building and the gas canopy on that site?
We did. We were, we were at talks with Hudson Headwaters at one point to purchase the building to the east of us, their their current building. That didn't, that didn't pan out. They didn't end up wanting to sell. So we had a number of layouts using that. We tried different shaped buildings. You know, instead of, you know, just a rectangular building. But neither of them really, really worked well on the site. You know, as we really thought that this was really the best layout that that really could fit on this triangle lot with what we really have to deal with here.
And your site plan accounts for like a fuel truck being able to access?
Yep, yep. Fuel tanker can enter and exit without an issue. We would probably go with a off-hours delivery time, so be, you know, during the nighttime, just because when the fuel tanker would be on site, it would block, you know, a majority of the parking in the in the canopy. So we would choose to do it off-hours, just so we're not impacting, you know, the business while we're doing it. And then, you know, two, I think traffic on the roads would be a lot less at that point in time, too.
Thank you.
It would seem the the concerns I have as well are probably more for the planning board than for this board.
Got a question. I'm not really sure if it's really pertinent to our discussion, but what was the, was the reason for removing the previous gas pumps? I was a little young at that time, but if there was pumps there before, there must have been a reason why it was ineffective and what changed to want to reinstall them? A lot of times when we, when we take gas out of the stores, it's for this reason, it's because you know, the lot's too small. Just the layout where the where the building building currently is and then adding a canopy. it just really didn't make sense to make that investment with that, the building layout that's there. It just it was too, too tight. So the only way to really do it would be to rebuild, and now, you know, when the tenant moved out, it was Hudson Headwaters. You know, they, they moved out, and then that created an opportunity for us to then look at redeveloping, you know, our site now that we didn't have a tenant. So I think with the additional space by moving the building back, you know, it opened up an opportunity for us to, to invest, you know, and put gas back in here.
I guess it is material as far as, I don't know, the change to the to the, versus the change to the neighborhood, if we increase traffic. That would be, that would be a change to me in the so I feel like if we had gas there, that would be a kind of an increase in traffic, which it's kind of a crazy intersection as it is. So that, that feels like a problem to me. And then it is an extremely substantial, you know, request to, to all those setbacks. So for me, I'm not super keen on it.
Have you, have you done a traffic study for this project? I do agree. It's a very problematic site and problematic intersection in general. I think moving the curb cuts back from the intersection as proposed probably will help that, but did you do any other traffic studies?
On, we haven't done a formal traffic study. I would, I would think that really we're not going to increase, you know, there were two uses on the site previously. You know, you had the medical office behind us as well as us, you know, using all of that, that space. So I, and we used to have gas. I don't, I don't really see a huge impact on traffic, you know, considering we're already there. I think if we weren't there, I think there would be, you know, there is a gas station that just, you know, pulled their gas tanks, no longer have gas just west on Broad Street. So I, I, I don't think there'll be a huge increase.
This site is very similar to the site, your site in South Glens Falls. Did you, is this, is it, I can't tell from the map if they're approximately the same size, but the in relation to the lot, this, the shop there looks quite a bit smaller. Did you first, is, is that an alternative size or is?
That, that shop would actually, is actually larger than what we're proposing here, plus they have one additional gas pump, so you'd have two, two more fueling points.
Okay, so the site itself must be a bit larger.
Yes, the, the lot itself, the shape is still the triangle, but yes, it is, it is larger than what we have here.
I know there, there, traffic just the turning in and turning out in that lot does cause a lot of congestion in that particular intersection, which is I, my concern with this one as well.
Yeah, I think with that one, with us having restricted movements on Route Nine there, I think that poses a problem, forces, you know, other people out the other street. You know, and I, I think that's a little confusing there with this. You know, we're requesting to have full access on all, all locations.
What's the, so you're demolishing the existing Stewart's building, and there's a building behind it that you're demolishing?
Yep. When it was first built, it used to be a Little Caesar's, and then previously, it's been rented by Hudson Headwaters.
It's, it's the building that's directly behind. It's, it looks like it's almost attached, if you looked at it from an aerial view, behind your current shop?
Correct. Yep, there's probably, I don't know, five, six feet in between the buildings currently.
Right, okay. Yeah, I mean, this is a, an approved use within GC one district. It's just the tightness of the space, I think, is, is the issue.
I think, you know, I think you're gonna, you got a lot more parking than what you currently have, you know, the, you know, the flow is, is gonna be so much better with the the multiple entrances, you know, right now, the, the parking that's out at the point is, you know, when you back out of those spots, you're backing out onto sidewalks. Could, you know, pose a problem with pedestrians that are walking on the sidewalks. You know, I think it's gonna be a really substantial improvement from what it currently is today. I know we're trying to fit a lot in there, but I, I think it's gonna be a, a major improvement from what's there today.
Yeah, I gotta just chime in, you know, I, I think there, there will be some, some fun, maybe not fundamental changes in what's taking place, but you know, just if we're looking at just the holistic view of it, you know, some of the traffic that would have been going to the Hudson Headwaters building that was being leased, no longer being a factor here. Then, so that I think in my mind, just speaking for myself, I think that kind of neutralizes any possible increase in traffic that would be taking place through the, with the gas pumps. And, you know, the, there are certain times of day where regardless of that Stewart's being there as is, regardless of pumps being included, that's, that's a, that's a major right of way for people going to work and leaving work. You know, you have your traffic times. I go down that road every day on my way to work. So, you know, I don't, I don't see it being this, an albatross of, of any kind. I think the canopy will, will be an adjustment for sure. But I don't know, the traffic doesn't really bring a, a big concern to me. I think it'll be a, a closer to a net neutral than, than anything else.
I gotta echo off what Matt said. I travel the road daily. I, I don't have no issues. I've been in and out of there. The only thing I agree with Chris on is, you know, they, they definitely should be fueling off-hours overnight. If we could put that in there, that would, because I know if they do it during the day, it is gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I, I agree with you there.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
How many pumps are you planning to put in?
There'll be two, two pumps. There is a substantial amount of walk-up customers that we, we have. There's, there's a number of people that actually walk to the site.
So it looks as if the parking is pushed further back into the site to the wider section, if I'm not mistaken. Is that accurate?
Yep, the, the, the parking right now, or what's proposed is, is really behind our current store.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to, because I, I know now it, you, I think you mentioned people backing up onto sidewalks. The parking now is in the very narrow section of the lot is what it appears. From what I recall from memory, yeah, from seeing it. And this would shift it to approximately where the existing building is, so wider.
Yeah, yep, it's, it, like, right now, we only have we have five spots across the front of the building, and we would, we'd be increasing that to seven. So it's definitely wider when we push it back.
Will that narrow portion now, so the point be your green space?
Yep, we're, we're looking to submit to the planning board tomorrow with, with some revised plans, addressing some of their comments. And we added a patio out there with, with a substantial amount of landscaping on the point. So as you're entering the, the city, you know, it's really gonna clean up that corner and make it look nice, because there's a lot of landscaping and green space out there now.
Great, thank you.
I think overall, it looks as if it'll be an improvement to the existing parking and, and egress and ingress. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment on this?
I don't know, Jeff, there's no one in queue.
No one in queue? Do we have any other questions, comments? All right, none. For secret purposes, I believe this is type two, unlisted?
Yeah, as I understand, they're just seeking setback variances. There's no lot coverage variances. Is that correct, Chris?
I don't remember actually on that.
Well, it was, it was notice for just setbacks, so we'll go with that. And hearing most of the questions and concerns from the board, those could be addressed by the planning board during their site plan review.
Right, with that, I would like to make a motion that the Glens Falls zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the application for area variance for the project known as area variance twenty one dash zero zero three Stewart Shop Corp, owner of Tax Map three oh nine dot thirty five dash two dash four, known as one eighteen Broad Street at this evening's meeting. If I look at the test of this, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character or a detriment be created to nearby properties by granting this, I, I don't believe there will be. In fact, I think there will be some improvement. Noting that the green space will be significantly enhanced, and the parking will, will be moved further back and, and seem to have more room. Whether this could be achieved by another method, I don't know how else they would expand this, given the shape of the land and the unwillingness of the adjacent property owner to sell. I think if you look at this, whether it is substantial, it is in terms of granting the relief from twenty down to four on the Broad and Hudson side, and then for the canopy as well as the store, and then the variance for the rear yard setback appears to be substantial, but I think when you look at it in proportion to the project, it seems to fit with what they're trying to do, and particularly looking at what, what's there existing. It's non-conforming to begin with. I don't believe this will have an adverse impact in the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And whether this is self-created, I mean, Stewart's has owned this property since before zoning was adopted. So it and it was already a non-conforming use, so I don't know that that would apply. Do I have a second?
A second.
Matt seconds. Roll call vote, Tim?
I'm, I'm a no. To, to me, I think this project is an adverse effect to the physical conditions of the neighborhood. And to me, I don't think all the options have been fully explored, so it's a no for me.
Matt?
I gotta say yes. I think this is a good project. I think this is an overall enhancement beneficial to the city and happy to see it.
Dan?
I'm gonna go with yes.
Steven? Yeah, yes. Allison?
I am a no. I don't believe the balancing test has been met to grant this variance, and I would like to see some other alternatives considered before we, we were to move forward with the variance request.
And I will vote affirmative. So we have, let's see, we've got one, two, three.
Four.
Four, four to two.
Four.
So the motion, the motion passes. All right. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda this evening. Counselor, did I miss anything? Ed?
No, there's nothing on the agenda, and there was no carryovers that I was aware of that weren't on the agenda.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the February zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Glens Falls. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Steve. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Everyone, be safe out there.
Yep, thanks, Peter.